Yeah, because then we can cleanse the whole room.
Yeah.
Yeah. Here.
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't know that.
So they don't do it the same day? And you can't run.
Way to bunch this much.
On the daily.
And that's every great team. And Harry was a sixth grader. Played his first year. He played the first few games. Not really, not really is.
Okay, we are live, recording has started, you've done. Bunching?
Oh, it's two days.
Yeah, it was probably.
Yeah, we'll do it.
Yeah.
Open enough.
Um. Yeah, okay, well, call me, go already here, one on the clock. Okay, we're gonna need a clerk, so I need, uh. Are she's here? Is she, Dana?
No, she's in the chair.
Oh, Jack, be around?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Jack.
Uh, roll, roll call Mike Barrett. Yeah. In the state league.
Yeah.
Home majority. It's Jordan. Uh, Pemberton.
There.
Home majority here. Tom Barrett.
Here.
Look.
It's here, Monday night.
Oh. Summary overview of agenda.
Thank you, Chair Barrett. After our allotted time for public comments, we'll review the finance and enrollment reports, and after that, we move into the consent agenda, including approving the minutes from the February twenty first regular board meeting. The board will then be asked to approve five hiring recommendations, one request for an unpaid leave of absence, two resignations, two rescindments of job offers, and then one additional, as you see on the, um, colored sheet of paper, another resignation. We will have, uh, two policies to affirm, as well as seventeen amended policies in the consent agenda, followed by approval of out-of-state travel for staff to attend workshop in May, in the month of July. Lastly, as I mentioned, we still need to add this to the consent agenda is to prove adding one new resignation to the consent agenda. There is no need for a closed session at this board meeting. Then the board will move into action items, and this includes only two items for today, approving the list of bills and wires in the amount of two million, seven hundred thirty thousand, two hundred eighty-nine dollars and twenty-nine cents. The board will then be asked to approve the resolution for the non-renewal of a coaching contract. And then, under miscellaneous, the board will be asked to approve the first and second few readings to amend policies. We will then adjourn for a meeting. Thank you. Yep, and that'll be, uh, Mr. As, uh, oh.
Austin.
I'll second it. To prove the agenda. March. President's discussion. Hearing them, although in favor of AI.
All right.
Hi. Public comments, delegation. Haven't been. Nope. Quiet. Report, it's fine, I'm done.
Okay, with this, I would refer you to, uh, page four in Board Book, and everything as usual is in order, you can see from, uh, first official page there, uh, that we have a strong fund balance, it's over thirty-four and a half million dollars. And, uh, we've been into it a little bit, and we'll bite into it a little bit more next year, but we still have about three times the fund balance that most school districts get to enjoy. Instead of two or three month fund balance, ours will basically be well over a year. If something were ever to happen and we were stopped, stopped from getting funding, we would last for a whole year, so, or more. We have a very strong fund balance, and, uh, it's a good thing.
You know, this fund down, they like, um, I don't know, where the guys have some kind of program or something? Is that where, and they needed money to help?
Yeah, yep, something like that. Yep, or, uh, maybe a trip or something for kids to, and that would come out of a building budget, but that all comes out of the fund. And I misspoke, I said thirty-four, it's twenty-two. Change, but, um, that's still, I'm talking about it, a very solid fund balance. So yes, the, we have different funds within the fund balance, a general fund, a, um, capital fund, and they all have different purposes, but what you were talking about is mostly things like textbooks, curriculum, learning, things that go to kids.
For true, like, if you see something that would benefit our kids.
Right, that or a program of some sort, yep, exactly.
For these, um, page two, were, were there all these redemption, these wire redemption, four hundred thousand, hundred eighty, twelve, two hundred thousand, everybody, both?
Those are, we're pulling money into, you know, electronically from other funds that are out there in the bank, and then using them for things like cable or, or other bills that we have. Willie can give you more specifics that you wanted to visit and how, what they're applied to, but a couple of times, uh, a month up to a couple of times a week, I'll see. He shares that with me, I get notification when these redemptions come in. Then. And of course, I'll audit to review it all too, at the end of the year. But the gist of it is that it's very, uh, organized, very accurate, and very helpful. I submit this to you for your acknowledgement. If I could, maybe since they go hand in hand, if I could direct you to page eighty-five, they really do go hand in hand, part of the financial report is often the enrollment report, because it's in, mostly it's in enrollment that dictates our funding and what we receive from the state, federal programs and government. And as we look at next year, we, we are seeing that we'll be down a little bit, probably going to be down about fifty to sixty students next year. But again, that's not alarming, that's, uh, just trends that happen, and we prepare for that in our budget. But if we look at, uh, as of March first of this year, our total enrollment is one thousand, four hundred and twenty-four. It's down three from the month before. Uh, it's up thirty from January ninth, so you see. And we kind of feel like a roller coaster sometimes. It was actually up since January, it's up since December, but it's down a little bit from the beginning of the year by about one. It's within the ballpark, we often fluctuate twenty to thirty in any given year. As we look at next year, looking at more like, uh, actually, I misspoke when I said fifty, it's about fifty less than what we started this year, so probably going to be in the in the low fourteen hundred each next fall, so it might drop another ten. But that's what drives our funding largely, and, uh, nothing alarming, and we're, we're holding steady, just up and down a bit. Even with the starters. It's back. That's it for reports.
Um, I didn't attend this deal in Albuquerque, even though I was supposed to be going.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Had a sickness in the family and I was just hoping I wouldn't be ostracized for not going.
Family first.
Family is more important than going, than meeting.
Yes, I've always said, take care of family, family comes first.
Yeah, understandable, I mean, it can happen, you don't know.
Yep. Yeah.
Well, I was pitching a lot of flack for not doing that, not doing that, not going on trips that I had in the house to go on, you know? That was my prerogative, whether I wanted to go or not, I just needed the okay. Yep, on the school board.
That's that. Thank you.
So, uh, then agenda. Transition for.
I'll need to approve.
Okay.
A second.
To approve, there's second. There was a discussion?
Was there some kind of conflict with my designing? Uh, the information on that?
I noticed that a couple, I seen like a couple of, that different jobs, and they're in here too.
Yep. Yep, as far as I know, there was no conflict.
He's in the district for quite a few years.
Yeah.
And he got a cushy job with something.
Yeah.
Looked at the government, tried.
I can see why you think that, the way you noticed, looks like you kind of left on not the best terms. Exactly, Julie's been with the school a long time, he does a good job.
Well, in twenty years at least.
Being right.
It's interesting, yeah.
How old is there, say I?
All right.
All right, hold. Bill and wires for the month of February, well, and forty-four.
Thank you, Chair Barrett, page two sixty-four, I would refer you to on Board Book. It's pretty close to the amount we spent last month, just a little bit different, but well, in line and everything is in order, so submit our bills to you for approval.
And motion to approve?
We do, or, but, I'll move, I'll move.
Jordan? I'm second. Prove, let's build the. President's discussion. Hearing them, although in favor of AI.
All right.
All right, hold. Two.
This has been through page three oh seven, three oh eight. Through, uh, three, three ten, three oh nine, three pages. Page three oh nine is the actual resolution. Page three oh eight is a letter that was sent certified for this individual. Again, uh, for from the recommendation of the investigation personnel committee. Take this action. Submit it to you today.
Extract the, and then hearing all that. Other dates on.
Page one.
It's three oh nine. This was non-renewal affected at the end of the two oh twenty-two, two oh twenty-three.
Top book. Yep, that's, that's the the last. Actually, correct, and so then, if the position, season hasn't started yet, non-renewing. I have the same question at first, if I can, I can check with Asher. Yep.
But it has no mention of, uh, oh, yeah, it has no mention of the other one. This, uh.
The resol, yeah.
Yeah.
The resolution has no mention of the second.
And, uh, I believe that is because it's a lot of time now between now and next year, so we address that later. Take action. Bring support. Like that.
So, um, has I been ad with them, or?
It's, um, not till this is set, correct?
Then three oh eight have this. Back.
Yeah.
Three oh eight, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah. So technically, I was expecting to see oh, rules. I, I was expecting to see both of them on this resolution, but and we can certainly, the person had been notified, so we can certainly do a, an amendment to make sure this addresses under item one. Now therefore be resolved by the school board as followed, Coach A's contract for his position is hereby non-renewed. Coach A's position contract for the other position is hereby not for the following year. We can add that to this resolution, just like we would add like we added oh, the consent agenda, we could have motion to add that couple.
Then it has, you know, this year's two, it has board member, so. Isn't so, then a board member isn't actually introducing that.
It's, it, yeah, a board member, we have to have a motion and a second to.
What I mean, a board member isn't introducing this, it makes sound.
Hmm, that's how resolutions are worded though.
Are they?
Yep. Motion for the adoption and the foregone resolution, we're duly.
It's like one of us. It's like one of us are introducing that
Right.
to the board.
Right.
None of us are.
Nope, and we have it on record that none of us is doing that, none of you are doing that. It's being, because it says prior to that, whereas the school board has considered the administration's recommendation. So it's school administration that is introducing to the board, and it's the board who simply can bring the motion and the second.
What, what year was this roundup where the board fires these people? They don't know. All right. Well, did you guys make that up, or what? Really, I mean, the way I understand it, or the way I've always thought it, Brad, was that admin, I mean, they could, they could do that, they were the ones that, you know, didn't renew someone. Someone died, I mean, that's the way I understood it, I mean, that's why it's, I'll, I'll do it.
Yeah.
And, uh, but now it, now it's coming directly to us. And, um.
Jerry, would you be willing to get Willie?
Yeah.
Willie's, he can explain and he can probably remember when this happened. Um.
I don't recall it being, um, you know, I served at three different intervals, you know, and then I
Yeah.
So I don't know if it was.
It was, yeah, it was, uh. Between.
But it seems like we can. It can choose when they can say, this is a managerial decision. It's the board decision, you know?
I mean, it should, it should be a managerial item first, and then if there's an appeal, then it would come through the board, which thing.
I agree with you. So that's what we could fix at the policy meeting this summer?
I don't know. That's it.
Yeah, I can come to you with a policy that's called the Enabling Act. Will enable us to do those things.
Yeah.
Puts you, it helps you get out of difficult situations, and if there's an appeal, that comes.
And then on the other side too, I, I don't think that, you know, the board can, they, we want everything to come to us, and then when it comes here, that pot, and we're like, oh, that's a, you got, we can't do that either.
Yeah, that's it.
Good point.
Yeah.
It's just, it's like there's some kind of retaliation going on there, or.
Yeah, I don't, I don't understand.
But although it's not in here, that's it. It's needful.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Retaliation on someone's part here.
They actually, uh, pretend it was retaliation that got this individual, either this situation.
But, so then he, he didn't see the stuff the other people saw either, like I didn't see.
Who, who's he? Oh.
Well, I've, I've seen things going on in the
No, the.
Program, you know?
Oh, the, see.
What's going on, all the big.
Mike, you weren't here, you said you weren't able to talk to him either? Because we had.
No, I, no, I didn't talk to anybody, I'm, oh, you know, we're busy with the game.
Yeah, we're kind of busy, but we talked about having to make sure that people who weren't here that one day, you know, were just prepared ahead of time, not that you need to be, but it helps.
We're, uh, we're in a situation right now where we're kind of wondering, what's the process for a situation like this? And what we're referring to is the renewal of a coaching contract, is this something that is usually decided at the managerial level, or is always something that comes to the school board? So there's clarification on that.
Um, so, the school board deals a lot with employment and um, that's particularly you, signing every contract that does company activities, or any of your, type of coaching contract. Um, I think a lot of, some of you have been coaches within our school. You don't come to HR. Um, but with the way, because we happen to, most coaching contracts after the board does your, that's, that's the process should be that it was those for non-renewal.
How long do you know, was it prior to your tenure here, your time here, that's going on like that?
Um.
School board makes the call.
This would be the first non-renewal, but we used to do most contracts under the, because, again, the degree of this goes, um, different departments of the one. Um, but then, if I recall correctly, the board wanted it to, to every student coming to the school board, um, to make sure that we have, you know, the best applicants. And then, last year or the year before, it was changed back to.
So if it hadn't been a continuous okay, then just person would have been done, season, and they would have not been hired again. Maybe that's what we want to go back to also.
I mean, like, yeah, there's a certain time where we who, I mean, we have pool of who's recommended to us. I mean, this is all done by administration. And, and we approve them. I mean, this is.
But either way, whether it's ongoing or seasonally, practice has been in order. Proves the hiring, proves the dismissal or non-renewal. Or making, that's what we need to look at. Make it more manageable.
I think we need to go back to that, instead of this continuous one, I mean, when we change that. I think that everybody should have an opportunity to find who a good job, you know?
Yeah.
A winning season or a losing season.
But last year, um, I think it was last year, I was, um, wanting to make sure that continuity plan, I don't continue.
Who would it?
Yeah, I, I remember a couple of years ago, I mean, sure, wanting to the board to have the best coach. It's a coach.
I believe, I miss, well, I still believe that, that the only way you can fire is like some type of misconduct, and fire based on a losing feeling.
Yeah, I, yeah.
Yep, and.
Yeah, and that, that has something to do with it though, right? I mean.
Right, and you do with the.
Did you see that?
Nothing, have you do with the WL column?
Everything, yeah. I remember when they brought in a coach. People wanted to gone right away, you know what I mean, after a few Ls, and then I went to the MSBA training by the high school. Then number one, it's one of the most time-consuming things a board number will spend time on, is coaching. Which to me blew my mind, because, um, they asked, and, you know, I brought up, uh, budget policy. Other people were giving up anything. The coaching.
But. And the priorities.
I, that mine.
So that helped me then, because, you know, I was on the board, and people were like, you gotta fire so-and-so.
Mm-hmm.
Unless they believe that, that did.
So.
Were you like harassing the student?
Yeah, that, or something inappropriate, or you're not showing it, you're missing practice.
That's what we're doing with here. You're appropriate. Did you get the read that some time?
No.
And that, that stuff only should go to the personnel. The personnel reads it, the personnel makes a decision to come to the board.
I mean, I think you should, you should read that. They don't look at that.
And we can show them afterwards.
You know, I, I mean, that's the way it, like, you should need what the rest of us. Right?
And, well, not really, well. Yeah, I mean, we can show them, but it's not like it's must, good, because it's the personnel can. But, uh, since we did show it to the others, still have.
Well, I suggest we, we take over use that. Only. There'll be Christian Goddard in, in.
In Jupiter.
Yeah.
I thought maybe it was because I've been accused of being ineffective on the school board that I didn't get this. I didn't remember about this.
And you shouldn't have.
Yeah.
You shouldn't have.
He had told me to try to get a hold of everybody, I, I didn't.
I, we were busy last week, and I, I didn't know.
Their election too.
I.
Here's what it amounts to, really, if the personnel committee, after, after admin investigated, using due process, doing it properly, working with an attorney even, came to the personnel committee with a recommendation. Personnel committee looked at everything, brought up. Personnel committee agreed, bringing it to the board, which is why it's on board back. Now, what you, you know, what should have happened is you got your board package five or six days ago, you looked at it, have asked questions beforehand. So, in a public meeting, technically, we shouldn't take a recess either, because that's like very close and closed session, you know?
So, sort of person is on here, does he know about the thing?
Yes. Yep, there, in, on page three oh seven. Yep, there in on page three oh seven is the letter that was sent, this three oh eight, certified letter. And you also got a regular letter. And time for questions was when you had the packet two, three, four days ago.
Sounds like it went through all the proper channels, right? Right, you guys thought, you thought, who thought?
With with that, like, I'll say this, I agree with the decision to acknowledge that there was a misconduct. On what happened based on what you see, I agree with that. Thing that's been on my mind is. Um, with the tribe, that is the one that I'd like to give the most my job that's been here. I'm the director of the program. The way we do personnel policies is we give people chances to redeem themselves if there is a mistake or some type of, uh. Um. Uh, for production of work, you know, you get your verbal, you get your written, you get your second written, and then eventually you get terminated. To me, this is coming to us as a, hey, this guy made this mistake, let's get rid of him. So for me as a community member and as like somebody who has to be in a position to terminate or give people chances. Doesn't sit right with me.
Yeah, what we have is what's called a progressive discipline policy that do allow people. Prove that this is ongoing and free flagrant violation of code of.
Did you bring that up at the meeting?
Did you sell it? Well, it was a policy committee meeting that we were at that that.
They had, they weren't. When they were at work though.
I I'm not on the personnel, I just, I had actually by coming to the personnel committee because I just wanted to see how policy committee needs work, which I want to add is very beneficial to be at. Um, but anyways, then Ashley and Mike said, hey, we want to show you something. And I asked them to show this.
Yeah.
Just want to put people on their radar for the next meeting.
Yeah, and we do that progressively, give people a chance, prove their behavior, address issues. Um, well, before it ever brought to this point.
And then as, um, you know, when we got sworn in, we all agreed that we were gonna follow policy. Uh. Not opinion, feeling, correct? Everybody following, you weren't here to go out and put our hands, right?
Yes, yep, even the difficult decisions, so just need a motion and a second to vote. Everything has been followed to the T legally and the due process, following everyone's rights.
None of the people who saw the info want to make a move. None of the people who saw it want to make a move right now.
The other thing is this individual can always reapply.
Can always what?
Can always reapply from the position. And then it's imposed.
Well, I I don't like the way this was worded, as board members, someone sort of introduced the resolution. And none of us are introduced.
But but any motion has to be introduced. Or you just.
Whoever raises the motion, they move on that.
Yeah, when last item we did, we had a motion to accept the checks that were spent this past month. If you made that motion, you introduced it.
Well, I seconded, yeah.
That's what it's, that's what it is. You're just making a motion. And it won't, this this won't be out there in the public to see the resolution, because it's got names on it. Minutes will simply reflect that someone made the motion, someone seconded, and the vote was made.
Because the way I'm looking at it, is admin is the one that presented.
Yep, and that is true.
Yeah.
Whereas. Administration making a recommendation to non-renew. Then because of these whereas's, we are therefore non-renewing. Just that can't take a vote until someone makes a motion. Second.
Well, I'm gonna move to approve based upon, I rather see it coming from somewhere else, but we, you know, we can't just sit here. Based upon, I'm gonna trust that based on what you guys saw and where it had come to this point, that there has to be something there, correct? So, and if we don't, then we're violating policy that we all said we're gonna hold. And are we gonna do it just because we have feelings about it? And operate, you know, we're gonna be, I I, this is the way I think, we have to be careful operating on feeling. At this table in leadership positions, if you go off feeling, you're opening up the door for all kinds of. Feelings are gonna dictate how you vote.
I think you are defining the integrity of the position.
MSBA and everything that. Most stand for at this table. So there, I'm gonna vote.
Have the motion, we just need to.
If the motion majority. Just to approve the resolution for the non-renewal coaching contract. Further discussion.
Need to get a vote on it?
Yep.
Tim, uh, did you? Um, well, uh, I'm asking to elaborate on the, since it's progressive. Uh, what would you call it, the.
Progressive discipline. And we apply that whether it's a coach or a superintendent.
Just those positions?
Pardon?
Just, uh.
All all positions, yeah. All teachers. Top to the bottom, bottom to top, all positions. Try and work with people so that they learn from mistakes. Who.
This was done right.
Yeah, yeah, they went through the process, like, I just simply am not fully educated on all of our policies. So I'm to the committee meeting and I'm literally reading through our policies and stuff. I wanted, I just, you know, I thought this would have something similar to what companies and programs like the tribe had, where.
You know.
There's a step one, step two, and then eventually, uh, this isn't a termination though, it's simply a us not renewing a contract. And how my follow-up question was, can you. It should apply it if you want to. This is different from a termination.
Yeah, we're not terminating, not. Not terminating.
So that's where my hesitation comes from is I guess I'm just not. I'm on the fence about the progressive discipline, uh, policy.
Which means it's based on the severity, correct? If you do something. You can, just like at the tribe, if you do some of this.
It's based on not only the severity, but on the. Proof. Very clear cut.
So here, we don't, we don't want to be in the school, but we don't have much to do with that tribe, because he's a driver, you know?
Correct.
You can't keep them from, you know?
Be careful how we define it.
Yeah, and label it all.
Identify them, but you're right.
Well, you're going to be on.
Yeah.
Coach eight right now, but.
Yeah, it's only just. I think we find you saying, oh, too much.
Yeah.
Okay, any more discussion on that?
Um, what do you want, oh.
What hasn't been called, been called?
Maybe, maybe. Yeah, all the names AI.
I have.
How many?
You get there.
Are you kidding?
Oh, three, that's right, yeah. Two.
I'll be three.
Three. Then you count for the no.
Three. All in favor is three? No?
Well, are you, you don't like abstaining, staying in there anymore? I'll bow to both of them. Both of them.
Okay, one no?
No.
One no? Same? Yeah.
But I, I don't like the way that stain is either, because it's from what I understand, that comes as a yes move.
Yeah, so.
Afterwards, yeah.
And and nobody should abstain unless they are a family member. So really, you shouldn't.
There's times to stay in this.
I'd like to have seen what all this other paper was for, you know, for.
But if you could have, you could have if you'd looked at your packet and had questions and said, I want to see what it says, we come in early before the. Um, I thought Ashley was going to get that.
But then again, we're we're sending a message back.
What's that?
We're sending a message that the committee that did this didn't do a good job. We're not trusting our people who aren't in place to handle it, what we're. Staying, or, I mean, we can all vote how we want. But I remember going to this before with with the board where that was it.
Yeah, to me, it just come up so fast, all of a sudden, you know? We were aware enough, James. And all of a sudden.
And yet we talked to you about it last week.
Yeah.
But so you had time.
Yeah.
So, and it it actually, it happened about a month ago, but it's taken time, that's what we talked about. Progression, interviews, investigation, we're going through the motions, notifying this individual. We haven't rushed anything. But at a certain point, it is. Speeding, it's time for accountability, that happens important. This is where. Think it's difficult to do.
The one of the yes come. Probably. You think it's like, oh, that's.
Do you want to look at that, right?
Well, no, no, since I wasn't, uh, when the rules found it the first time, I was, did you go and do now?
So there's four yeses then?
Okay, so we're re-going here now, or you're just changing your?
I just changed my.
Okay. Okay. So then there are four yes?
Let's be right. And MSB was right of the most, of all our topics, though, then, um, we spent the most on.
Yeah. Coaching.
There. Um, motion, there it, but you know, like I said, I I I didn't like, I don't like the way that.
Yeah.
You know, because it makes it look like he's presenting it, I mean, that okay with you?
Yeah, well, I'm I'm pressing you two, you two sides, you were, you're on that committee, I'm not, if you didn't. But you didn't, you didn't come to me and you didn't say, hey, man, this is BF.
Yeah.
Look what they're doing, this is BF, you didn't come to me, you didn't come to me.
It doesn't, we're not putting his, so we're not putting his name on this paper where he's the one introducing at this. A formality of, uh, of form.
And a resolution, so legal language and our lawyer language.
You're right.
Yeah, the legal, you said the lawyer looked at it. Yeah, I got more info from him than my fellow board member. Yeah, I'll have my number. Y'all have my email. It's a new school phone, my email is a new school phone.
I want to thank all of you for the tough decision.
Motion carries anyway. Yeah, okay.
There was a lot of, um, when they started letting anybody into the coaching that didn't go to college and get a coaching degree or anything, there was a lot of. A lot of stuff went on after that. I don't know if that's been changed since then or what. Also, it's time. It was as if they were getting it out of a Cracker Jack box, their coaching license. And the coaches have to go to school to get the eighteen, twenty some hours. Be certified as, or the no policy says the head coaching position, they do that. Coaching certification, they stay assistant and below, it's not necessary.
It's right, it's not, it's sorry.
Right.
But it it all depends on who applies, you know, if somebody applies and says, I'm up to get the job, but. There's like a lack of applicants and the ones who do apply don't have it, they'll pick out the best people to go. That's why I was able to coach middle football, I don't got a coaching. Nobody else other than me applied for the coaching.
This year, we have to go through online, there's an online program now through the Minnesota State High School. So we all have to go through, not all, but so I know I have to go through it. Ontario.
Certain amount of hours you have to do, right?
Well, there's, yeah, I mean, there's.
There will have coaching license, are they graduate or?
Well, everybody, everybody had to go through that, and then we we got the, um, we got the reminder that if if we were to win Friday, everybody had to have gone through that. In order to go to state, or you wouldn't be allowed to coach on it. So there's been some tweaks to that.
Mm hmm.
And like you recommended, we still, we still.
Training?
Uh, there's, it's online, so it takes as long as, you know what I mean? Takes as long as it takes you, I guess, and then there's question and answer. So there's a process that we have to go through, and it's a lot of. It's not just, um, basketball related, there's mental health is put into there, concussion protocols are put into there, there's a lot of, it's it's really good, I was impressed. There's rules, now the shot clock, there's that's a thing in there. Knowing the basketball rules, knowing your role as an assistant. You know, and it was, it was really good stuff, um, I was very impressed with that. With that program that the high school league put out. And then they also offer some that, I, they're kind of an elective, you don't have to, you know, they're not required, but. That's in there, and all of us have to go through that too. Yearly, I want to move to yearly.
Great, okay, moving on here, miscellaneous. Here we have. The second of three readings of two policies and then the introduction of first reading and a few others. No action is being required. And, uh, trust you all had a chance to look them over, the one thing, since it's a second reading, that I want to point out on. Five oh one, policy five oh one under ten A, school weapons. Just, and you don't even have to look at it if you don't want to, but I wanted to point out that the purpose of that particular change in policy. Tighten it up and to make a definition of dangerous weapon fit and look wrong. Um. It broadens it so it's not just, uh, firearm. But also, uh. Something that can be unloaded or any device designed as a weapon, so it could be a baseball bat. Somebody comes in with a bat, turns it into a weapon, doesn't say such, but it says, any. Thing, any item used as a weapon. Or any combustible or flammable liquid or other device or instrumentality. That in the manner it's used or intended to be used, is calculated or likely to produce death or bodily. So it tightens up what we just defined as a weapon and gives us a little bit more. Authority to keep schools safe. But that's the second reading on that, and then we have a few first readings, there's a theme. More time with the next board. That's that. Also, while we're under miscellaneous, I wanted to mention that the Minnesota Indian Education Conference. Is coming up in about a month, and that'll be in, uh. Just south of Duluth, you know there? Yeah, our heat, yeah.
Information?
M I E.
Oh, I just want to bring that up when when it is.
Yep, it's it's not on a state travel, we don't need any board permission. I just wanted you to be aware of it in case you want to go. Yeah. Talk to you.
We're sending staff there.
Pardon?
Are we sending staff?
Yep, there's some staff going to the elementary, canoe is planning to go, I believe, and this some, this staff. I'm I'm considering going to have gone before. Very first time I attended M I E A, I learned so much, that was when I was. Phil and Kelly were at that time, seventeen years. I think it's good conference. So, that's all I have. Um, we've had a very difficult, uh, actually, I do have one more, difficult week here, tragedy that happened last. Weekend or Friday night or Thursday night, uh. And tomorrow is the nineteenth anniversary of the tragedy of old five. Tomorrow, after school. Is a community organized walk to commemorate the nineteenth anniversary. Then before that, seventh hour, we'll have a secondary complex here, a. Assembly, six and twelve grade students where we will, will be a healing ceremony for all of the trauma that's happened recently. Will include a commemoration of the nineteenth anniversary. But it will also be a healing ceremony to honor. Who lived lost last week of those young children. And other teenagers who have passed away and elders that have passed away this year, so we'll. Make it a healing ceremony with some drunk songs and prayers. And, uh, and then we'll. Let out school and those who want to stay and go for the walk. Be welcome to join for any of that. Off the Trump.
Was, um, I, I saw those shared, which was cool, um, I got some. Comments on the blue, I don't know if that, something that's been done.
That must be the community of the school that. Yeah, I'm not aware of that part, yeah.
I told them, I wasn't sure which. But because they were just kind of concerned, again, you know, it could just sound.
Not good for the birds or. Just the. That is the. That is the. Makes highways. I've heard that too, that moves can be. Help wildlife.
I spent some pretty news part of that crew. I do that. Yeah. You know? Good idea, um, good idea that brings up. So I just kind of want to share to you, I seen a lot of, um. What we call them, I call them hero, you know what I mean? Throughout this tragedy, I've seen a lot of, um. You know, it's our first great. Group of staff really stepped up to support each other.
Yeah.
It was really awesome to see and I. Wanted to share that. It's something that I get to see every day. Lucky to work over there. A lot of. Lot of good people over there. With good hearts, uh. Very important, but I really saw it.
Yeah, so did I, actually.
Yeah.
Thank you for bringing that up. We had administrators and. Elders, culturists. Five staff. All the teachers and all the, all the staff over there surrounded each other. Supported each other and, uh, teachers who work with these kiddos. I stopped over at Head Start and they were having a circle to support each other too, so I thought that was good. I would agree. I'd call them heroes too.
Yeah, then, you know, bring up that that cultural crew that they really helped. That is the staff. You do know we have to. And then those those. That crew, uh, Rob, Ty. Sheriff Keener is really helping. But the staff and the, or the kids down there. That group. That lead. It started Monday and then. First felt perfect. Helping the staff then direct for the kids, and then they had a meeting with all the history and so. So, yeah, it was, it's heavy over there, but it's, um. It's really. Something to see of the staff coming together. And then, you know, not just that that crew. Everybody's a little bit turned off about, yeah, so. But I just wanted to kind of share that.
Thank you. Then. It'll be a busy day tomorrow because. Nicole sent me a text with the. Information about a candlelight memorial also happening tomorrow for the two children that died. Just so we get it out there so everyone knows. So gathering to show support, come together and remember. Tomorrow at New Red Lake Center from six to eight. Pipe carriers are welcome, singers and drums are welcome. All community members welcome. Please bring your candles, good energy.
Oh, yeah, but so what, one idea was was to plant. Tree. The tree back, you know, that you triggered my thought by planting a tree or so. I don't know if that has to come here. But they were thinking about the track back. Cause there's no shade. If you've been to the power, there's no shade back there, but it's right. So they thought it would be a good. Kind of a memorial. I know there's. There was.
Shouldn't have to be a motion or anything that's approved by the board. I think that's something we can do. If you're okay with it. Blessing. Yeah. That would be a nice.
Get out with board as far as location.
Yeah.
Screw.
If it's on powwow grounds, we'll have to work with the tribe and I think that.
No, it's the iron. So, you know, the track.
All there.
I know.
Sure.
Yeah. Also, powwow there, yeah.
Gotcha. Okay.
So. Obviously, that is.
Yeah.
To share that down with them, someone shared with me by. My teacher.
Good idea. Now and. Yeah.
I'm just getting my back.
You started.
That was my first time on on the floor at the round. All the other years I sat up in the corner. Being down there, it's. Wow, man. Wow, I've been. Wow, Jim's right up there. Yeah.
It was?
Yeah, it was pretty.